Eric, from my end, I think I'm good with whenever you want to start.
All right, well, it is six o'clock. Mr. Mayor, would you like to call the work session to order?
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Work session, April the 21st, 6:00 P. M. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is Eric Berlin. I'm the city administrator. Due to the recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and the state of emergency declared by the city of North Kansas City and stay-at-home order issued by Mayor Don Stila, this meeting is being held virtually with the mayor, city council members, and city staff joining the meeting on an online platform. The public may view the meeting live on Channel 2, the city's cable channel, or our YouTube channel, which can be found at the city's website at www.nkc.org/live. Tonight's work session is on the subject of rental inspections. Earlier this year, the city council requested information on our current rental inspection program and on stuffs that might be taken if the council was interested in augmenting the existing program. In the memo in your packet, staff relates some history, describes the city's current program, and discusses measures that might be taken to augment the city's current effort should council wish to do so. I would say we did not introduce this topic because we are making any recommendations for changes, but only because we were requested to provide some information for discussion purposes. So at this point, I will turn it over to our community development director, Sarah Kupler.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to go over the information that was presented to you in the staff memorandum about rental inspections. The city began inspecting rental units in 1992. The ordinance was adopted in June of that year, and it laid out that we would conduct rental inspections when a unit was vacated. And inspections were based on what then had adopted was the Uniform Housing Code. Apparently, this was controversial at the time because there was a council member who asked that rental inspections be placed on the April municipal ballot for consideration by the community at large. It's not clear from the minutes what was controversial about this, but that that motion failed. And we have largely been conducting rental unit inspections in generally the same way since 1992. In 2007, council considered adding a new section to the municipal code, a Title 18, Housing Rental. And two public hearings were held on this topic, both of them drawing around 120 people. The controversial topics from this proposal were adding a rental licensing program with an annual per-unit license fee and an annual inspection requirement. The public comments about these regulations included concerns that landlords would pass higher costs on to their tenants, objections to inspections of occupied units, and complaints about treating rental housing differently from owner-occupied housing. Ultimately, the council did not take any formal action to adopt these proposed measures. So the rental inspection program that we do today was updated in 2018. When we adopted the 2018 building codes, we also adopted a landlord registration program. This was intended primarily to collect data on landlords to help us improve communications with them and to be able to contact them immediately if we had a particular problem. If you are interested in more information about our rental inspection program, we do have a brochure that details more specifically what we look for in rental inspections. It's on the Community Development Department's website at www.nkc.org/CD. On the left in the list of headings, there's one for inspections, and the rental inspections brochure is down at the bottom of that page. To shift gears for just a moment and give you a little bit of information about our housing units, our most up-to-date data from the American Community Survey says that North Kansas City contains 2,657 total housing units, and 42% of those are single-family homes. The American Community Survey estimates that 78% of all homes in North Kansas City are rental-occupied. That would include single-family homes, duplexes, apartments, and 22% are owner-occupied. Our landlord registration program, because it's focused on landlords, has not asked for information about types of units. But staff analyzed the 2019 registrations to determine the types of units that are rented in North Kansas City. And going through that data, we find 232 single-family homes are renter-occupied. That accounts for about 21% of all the single-family homes in North Kansas City. So our current rental inspection program, regardless of the type of unit, it requires an inspection prior to a new occupant moving into a rental property. The owner or the managing agent is required to contact Community Development to schedule the inspection with our Neighborhood Services Officer. Occasionally, our inspector contacts owners to remind them of the inspection requirement, especially when we see a "for rent" sign in town in front of a home where we have not historically done an inspection. It's possible that some rental units turn over to new tenants without the city being notified or an inspection occurring. We focus on ensuring that units are safe, inhabitable, so our inspector looks for working plumbing fixtures, functional doors and windows so that people can exit a unit in case of an emergency. We look for safe mechanical equipment, working smoke detectors. We look for GFCI outlets installed near kitchen and bathroom sinks, anything that might cause a threat to health and safety. And if any deficiencies are found, we note those in an inspection report, and owners must correct the deficiencies and schedule a follow-up inspection. The time required to inspect a home depends on the size of unit, but generally, it's about 15 minutes. And the number of inspections we do each year also varies based on the rental market. We average over the last five years about 325 inspections a year. So as Mr. Berlin said, if you think of rental housing and oversight as a spectrum, from no oversight to heavy oversight, we're probably somewhere in the middle. But staff feels that that has been a program that's working well for the city. If you wanted to make changes, we would want to understand your goals or desired outcomes in making changes to provide you with concrete proposals. The memo provided some general ideas based on if you wanted to move towards increased oversight, annual inspections or rental licensing would be on the more on the heavy oversight end of the spectrum of housing programs. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about our current program or the options that we presented in the memo.
So I'm seeing Councilmember Stewart, and then Councilmember Clevenger, and then Councilmember Pierce.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on whatever year it was, when you say 2009, I think, that meeting on the rentals.
Seven.
Okay, seven, even longer than I thought. I was there as an employee. I think I was fire marshal. That's why I had to go in case they got into us inspecting, which we never do on the fire side of an owner-occupied house. I mean, I mean, a house, period, residential. And there, if you think it was a large crowd showing up for that bicycle lanes, you should have been there for that meeting. It boiled down to, and most of the people there were the renters, not the landlords. The landlords were represented. But the biggest problem they have, and I do too, is invasion of privacy. I mean, I don't know why I come in. I don't rent. But if I did, I don't want people, and what are you gonna do? Have somebody do it at night? Because if I work, I don't want you in my house. And that's kind of things that came up. I'm trying to tell you. And I think the residents were right. I think the way we do it now, there'll be a few slip through the cracks that don't get inspected in between. But that happens with any inspection program, I think. So anyway, in my opinion, after living through that meeting, I think we should be no more stricter than we are now. And that's what I gotta say. Thank you.
Councilmember Clevenger.
Okay, thank you. I'm one of the ones that was concerned about our rental inspection program, and I'd like to thank Sarah for clarifying what we do. But we do have some fall through the cracks, and basically, it happens in the avenues. Now, in this time of crisis right now, you know, adding extra staff, adding extra money, you know, I don't think that's something that we need to look at immediately. But I do think that our rental inspection program can use some tweaks. I know at one point, we talked about sometimes the landlords don't tell us if a unit changes. And so changes tenants. And if a new tenant is in there, we don't know about it. I think that could be linked to the water bill somehow unless the landlord has the water in their name. If a water bill change, name change happens, then we should maybe contact the landlord. I think the registration program has helped somewhat. Necessarily, it doesn't have to be every year. I thought maybe every couple of years, but I understand Rick's point, too. If you're going inside these units and people work, how do you get the inspection done during the day? And that could open us up for, you know, some legal issues. The one thing that I do want to say is that, let's say, a home or an apartment or something has a winner for a long-term winner, five, 10 years, you know, that's a long time to go without an inspection. I don't know how that works out. I guess as far as a goal that I was looking for is to try to clean up some of these, because we've had a few reports in the avenues where somebody is squatting in a house or living in a house that doesn't have water, doesn't have electricity. I understand not having electricity is maybe, maybe not the issue as far as, you know, having them being a co-defence. But I know having water, you need water to live there. So, you know, one of my goals is, or if someone brings it to our attention, a mechanism that how we can get it checked out, have staff report back to us on that. Just trying to throw things out here again, certainly, we don't want to go overboard. I'm not, one of the drawbacks was, you know, that landlords would be upset. Well, the landlords don't live here, most of them. So that really doesn't bother me if they're upset or not. However, if our residents, I don't want the cost passed on to our residents if they do that as well, because we already have enough affordable housing issues there. So that's kind of why I brought this to the fore and just wanted to talk about it and would be willing, happy to listen to other council members' opinions as well.
If I might, before I call, and Councilmember Pierce, who was next, if I could maybe speak to one point that Councilmember Clevenger made, and Sarah, I might ask you to speak to another. So Councilmember Smith actually brought up the question in an email of using water bills as a means, when names change over on water bill counts, as a means to identify units that are turning over. And what I indicated to him, well, said all the council members, is I haven't, in fact, did talk to finance. That is something that we can begin doing. We can provide whenever we get notice that a unit is reverting to a landlord's name. We can let community development know that they can make contact with the landlord and say, do you need a, an inspection if the landlord hasn't already contacted us to arrange it? It does become a little bit more problematic, though, if the account simply switches over from one tenant's name to a successor tenant's name. If a new tenant has already begun inhabiting a unit, and then we are, would be in a position where we would be going into an inhabited unit to inspect, which, as we've discussed, is not something that we have done and which staff would really want to do. So that's kind of the one issue with using water bills. But if it, there are times when the water bill will revert to the landlord's name for a given point, for a given period before it switches over, and that is an opportunity for us. So we might be able to find a few more rental inspections to schedule in that manner. The other point, and Sarah, I'm sorry, sir, did you?
Isn't that up to the landlord, though, if they, if they, if the landlord, or whatever, if the tenant, it goes from tenant to tenant, the landlord was supposed to let us know, so wouldn't that be breaking the code? I think the city would have the right to go in and inspect that, even if some.
Well, it would be more a case of we would issue perhaps a GOS to the landlord saying, you know, which then goes through a municipal court process, and, but it doesn't get the inspection done. By then, it's the new tenant would be in. But the other point you mentioned was, you know, some anecdotal reports about no water, things like that. That's a matter of habitability. So if we got a report like that, sir, I'm sure that we would inspect a unit to see if, in fact, it's habitable, would we not?
Well, I would say it is very difficult for us to do an inspection inside someone's home, whether that's an owner or a renter. We have to be either invited into the premises by the occupant, or we have to obtain an administrative search warrant from the municipal court. Generally speaking, we rely on the occupant inviting us in in order to do an inspection, and that includes our rental inspection program. In that case, the landlord is inviting us into the unit to do the inspection. By, you know, they're required to do so by the ordinance, but they call us, they schedule it, they're there to open the door for us to conduct the inspection. If someone was living in a unit that was not considered habitable, and, you know, some, you know, a neighbor, you know, made a report to us that they were concerned, we don't have the right to enter the premise unless the occupant invites us in. And if we want to obtain a search warrant from the municipal judge, we have to have proof that there is a problem. That becomes very, very difficult and problematic. And that's just part of our legal system. I'm sure Mr. Barzee can speak further to the requirements of obtaining an administrative search warrant. But generally speaking, in cases where we have entered property and we have declared a property uninhabitable because of conditions inside a home, we have been invited in by an occupant or by, you know, if the police department is inside a unit and they see something and ask us to respond. Or there's been a situation where someone with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services has been in a unit because they're involved somehow with a client, and they've called us out and we've declared a unit uninhabitable. But it's much more difficult to do so when there's not someone who's asking us to enter a home.
Thanks for that clarification, Sarah. Councilmember Pierce?
Yes, I'm in a unique position in that I do rent, and so I reached out to the gentleman I rent from. And I agree that it would be an invasion of my privacy to have somebody come once a year, and frankly, it's not necessary because I'm renting from two landlords who are amazing. I think it would be penalize the landlords who are doing a good job, which I think are the majority of landlords, to have them register and pay more money, and that would also be foisted upon to me. I think that the only solution to maybe tightening this up is just vigilance of those of us who are council people. For instance, I have a dog, so I walk literally my entire ward, pretty much at least every other day. And I know when things are emptying, and I know when things are for rent. And I even mentioned something to Sarah, but right now, we're in the middle of not doing inspections because there's a building that emptied out at the end of my street. So I brought that to the attention. There are no "for rent" signs out there. Allegedly, it's up for sale. But at least I brought it to the city's attention. I think the water bill idea is a good idea. I do agree that the problem is that bad landlords are going to get around this all the time. And tenants allow it to happen, because if you're in a basement, you have a basement, and you're renting out three spaces in your basement, and those people are paying $75 a month because that's all they can afford, whether or not they have utilities or not, they're not going to self-report. They're going to continue to turn over. So I think the city does a really good job with what they can do, information they have. I think the way it could be supplemented would be we as council people let them know when we know, particularly in the avenues and even where I live, when people are leaving, or if there's a rent sign that goes up. I don't know any other way around it. I don't think it's a better than its way it is, and I think everything else penalizes both the landlord and the leasing. So I have.
Does anybody else have any? Councilmember Clevenger?
Just one question, actually. As far as if the landlord, like in the rental registration program, or if we, they have to register every year, is that correct? Or do they just have to register once?
No, they register every year.
Okay, so I'm wondering if down the road, like maybe every two or three years, if in the registration process, if it wouldn't be that the landlord, at their expense, I don't know if they would again pass it on to the tenant, have to provide a report. That way, they set it up with their tenant to inspect the property where the city's not even involved. But I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but just something else I was throwing out. But I do agree with Councilmember Pierce that and Smith, that I think the water bill would be a good way, a good, you know, extra added safeguard that we could put in there. But question on that, as far as the landlord provided inspection, I don't know if that's even possible, but just throwing that out there.
That's not something that's required by the current ordinance. We, you adopted the landlord registration program as a local amendment to the adoption of the International Residential Building Code. So it specifically states what information we collect as part of the registration program. I would also point out that there is no cost to register as part of the landlord registration. There's no cost also for the rental inspection program. So neither of these currently collect, really impose any cost, direct cost to the landlords. So we could not require landlords as part of the registration program today to provide us with a third-party inspection.
I think Councilmember DeLong, you were asking to be recognized, and then I think Councilmember Pierce. Excuse me, Councilmember Pyramin, go ahead.
Well, it might have been both of us. I wanted to know more, Sarah, on the chart on page three, the rental inspections per year. If you could speak to what helps drive that up and what has caused the decrease over the last couple of years?
I'm not sure that I have a good answer to that question. I mean, the number of units that we inspect just fluctuates every year because it's based on how many people are vacating units and how many new occupants are moving in. If you, you know, if you renew your lease every, if you have a yearly lease, but you renew it every year and you don't move, then we're not coming in to inspect your unit. So I'm, I'm not sure I can give you a good answer as to why it was so much higher in 2017.
Let's see, so Councilmember DeLong?
Yeah, so a few questions. So what are the consequences if you don't have an inspection done?
Well, I would say it depends on whether we know that you didn't have an inspection done. If an inspection is not done, but we never discover that, I don't know that there really are any consequences.
Okay, if we discover it.
If we discover it, then potentially, the consequence is we could issue a general ordinance summons for the property owner to appear in municipal court. It's a violation of the ordinance that requires the inspection.
Okay, so how many times have we ever gone that route?
I'm not sure that we ever have.
Okay. And then just a couple more. So like if a tenant had a complaint, let's say I'm a tenant, I got water coming through my roof and I get mold in this room, and I talk to the landlord, try to work it out through them, it's just not working out, they aren't responding to it. Can I then come to the city and ask someone to come out and do an inspection if I know maybe one hasn't been done for two or three years?
No, because we do not have an ordinance that requires mold is not one of the things that we inspect for. And if you called us and said, I have a mold problem, we would probably tell you, you need to work it out with your landlord. Because mold is, there are thousands of types of mold, and mold in itself is not necessarily dangerous. So mold is just beyond our area of expertise. And also, because it's an, you know, an occupied unit, then things get much more complicated for us because that's not part of our inspection program. Now, if there was a life safety issue, then it would depend on what the life safety issue is, but mold is not life safety.
Okay, so we currently don't check at all for mold. I mean, is there a way we could, or just something?
Now, if the mold problem was clearly something, I mean, the shower was overgrown, we would flag that in the rental inspection as something that needed to be corrected. But if it's mold inside the wall that we can't, I mean, the other thing you have to keep in mind is that we're looking for things that you can see without dismantling the unit. If there's a mold problem, but it's behind a wall, we're not going to see that as part of the rental inspection program.
Yep. No, I was saying, so I was talking about, you know, pretty blatant, you go and just the whole corner is just black mold in the, okay. So if you see that, that is something you would check off is?
Yes.
Needing fixed, okay. And then is it possible, do you have like a checklist or a punch list of things you actually do look for when you walk in here? I know you said it's on the brochure, but I'd be kind of curious to see it from the inspector's perspective. What exactly do they go in looking for?
Right, the list of things we look for is contained in our rental inspection brochure so that we can give it to landlords and say, you know, if you're getting ready for an inspection, this is what we're looking for. Right now, because of the stay-at-home order, if people call for an inspection, we are sending them our rental inspection checklist and asking them to complete the inspection using the checklist and then sign that they've completed the inspection and send it back to us. So we do have a checklist form that we're sending to people right now.
Okay, could you forward that to us as well, or Nate or whoever wants that, just to kind of get a look at that? And then one more, has the landlord registration given us some idea of any properties that haven't done an inspection yet? I know it's kind of hard because you don't know who's turned over in that.
Right, no, because, I mean, we don't know when units turn over without someone calling us to say the unit is vacant and they need an inspection. We do have a good sense that, we feel that we have all of our landlords registered, or at least extremely close to all of them. You know, as I mentioned, the data from the American Community Survey, you know, that gave us an idea of how many rental units there were in North Kansas City. And so when we got close to that number with our landlord registration, we felt like we've probably, we've probably got everybody registered, except, you know, there are always, you know, a few units changing hands every year. There might be a few units out there, you know, a single-unit landlord who might not have been picked up in our registration. But we think we have anybody, everybody based on the data that we have.
Okay, and then just my feelings overall on this is, I feel like, you know, if I wouldn't mind seeing something that happened every two or three years, especially, or at least some sort of apparatus for tenants to request it, maybe. Because I could see where you could get it five years in, six years in, something happens, you can't get it resolved with the landlord. You know, not really looking to penalize someone necessarily, but, you know, if they're not getting the action they're wanting. I know it's easy for people to say, well, then just move out, but that's not always the easiest option for people either. You know, you'd rather see people work things out. I think that's some of the reason. I'd rather, I'd like to see some sort of inspection every so many years at least, but that's, that's all I really have on this right now.
I think Councilmember Smith, were you asking to be recognized a while ago, or am I mistaken?
I was scratching my face probably, but I do have some questions. I'll go ahead and bring it over here. So with the landlord registration program, like, I'm obviously aware of it because I was part of the council that I believe that approved it. But how are we signing on new landlords, that one-off one who, you know, buys their first duplex or single-family home? How do they hear about the registration program and the requirements for rental inspections?
Well, we, we have information about the landlord registration program on our website. As I mentioned, our inspector, when she sees "for rent" signs, she will, and for a property that she's not familiar with, she will call and remind people about the requirement to get a rental inspection. And now that we have the landlord registration, she'll also check to see if they're registered. So when we do, particularly right after the landlord registration was adopted, as she did rental inspections, she was, you know, making sure that people were registered with us as well. It, it would prob, it would be possible for someone to fly under the radar for a while if they didn't have, if they bought a unit with a tenant and the tenant stayed for a while. This is still kind of a new program. This is only the second full year that we've had. Um, that we've had landlords registered, um, and as I said, because the number of units, um. That we have accounted for is re- you know, close to being the same as the number of units the census leaves we have as renters. We believe that we've got, we've got ninety-five percent of our landlords.
Okay, um. The, the physical for rent sign is kind of a, I mean, it still happens sometimes, a little bit of a relic of the past, a lot of them are passing on Zillow and whatnot, so. Um, with the water billing piece to keep up with how things are changing hands. Some cities, I believe Liberty offers this option, is an auto reversion, so when the tenant who is vacating. Uh, calls to shut off water, it would automatically revert to the landlord's name and we could. Enroll, potentially we could enroll any landlord in the registration program to have that auto revert to their name. So when the next, before the next tenant comes in and puts it into their name, there would be a quick, a snapback. And I would, I would be. I kind of questioning how it would go directly from one to the other with no gap. Uh, because generally you have to at least clean a unit between tenants, sometimes maybe that's not happening. But if there's that snapback, it could trigger a still a vacant unit inspection, so something that. If it can be done in the water department, that'd be a potentially useful thing. Though, the other question I had, uh, so I've got the rental bullet brochure pulled up. Bullet point two talks about exterior surfaces uh, being painted uh, and free of. Cracks, windows with no cracks or gutters in good repair, that seems to be the most obvious one that could be targeted. Um, so as Rita mentioned, as I, I've got a, a baby that we take for mile long, miles and miles of walks. Uh, passing a number of houses that the paint is, you know, flaking right off and. The, the gutters are hanging here or there, is there a mechanism for residents to report or for, you know? I mean, I, I'm sure I could just reach out to you and say, hey, this, this house looks a little uh, off, could you see if it's a, a rental property?
Um. Well, that would be a code enforcement concern, regardless of whether it was a rental property or whether it was owner occupied. Um, and we, we take those complaints on a regular basis and then. You know, we go out and do our own inspection and determine what next steps would be, but. That's, that's something that the inspector looks for, but really that is more of a general code enforcement issue. That we deal with on a regular basis regardless of the type of occupant.
Okay, it seems like, to be like candid, it seems to be that's the biggest thing driving this, is people seeing the neighborhood starting to look dilapidated. Um, then the stories start to grow about, you know, this one didn't have running water and it becomes the thing of, the stuff of legend. Um. But is there anything that we're doing or able to do to enforce? I mean, I know we've got code enforcement, you can get a ticket for something, but you know, we had a building that burned twice, sit for nearly a year. Uh, just because of the legal ramifications of actually taking action against it. So is there something that we, is there any teeth that we have to shore up those external, um, the appearances on the houses?
Well, I would point out, the code enforcement is inherently a slow process. Because we send someone a notice about a violation of the ordinance and then we have to give them time to correct the violation. And then we do a follow-up inspection. And if there's still a problem, we send them, we, they might get a final notice. Or we might send them immediately a general ordinance summons to appear in municipal court. Then they have to be scheduled for a court date. Then, you know, we all appear in court and then the judge gets involved. And he, you know, they may request a continuance, um, and then the judge may, the judge may, um. Find them but not require them to abate the, the problem that landed us there in the first place. So yes, code enforcement takes a long time, but that's because it's a legal process. And we have to provide people with notice, we have to provide them with an opportunity to appear in court. Um, the, the court has its own ways that it manages its schedule and also gives people time to address something before they're issued. Um, some sort of, of punishment. Um, there is very little that we can do to speed up that process without. Really making people feel like they're living in an unfriendly community.
Thank you. Councilmember Pyramin?
Thank you, um, I have a couple of comments and then a question, um, one, I like the water idea. Um, because I think that gives us a good opportunity to have another view in. Um, and um, I have a question related to that that I'll get to. And in general, I'm in the camp that, um, I believe that we've, we strike a pretty good balance overall in North Kansas City of. Um, respecting civil liberties in addition to watching over our properties. However, it's clear from hearing public comment that we definitely have some outliers and there are. Those stories and those situations, so I think the question is, you know, how do we best manage those outliers? Uh, so I have two questions, uh, one is, is there, since for rent signs are really kind of, uh, in the past. Is there a way we can monitor any social media sites, um, for rentals, uh, switching over? Uh, and then also going back to something Councilmember DeLong said. With regards to the frequency of the, um, or the. The outliers, I guess, who haven't had an inspection for a long period of time. Do we keep any records on when certain properties, let's say that we know are rentals or we suspect are rentals? And when the last time, uh, they've been inspected are, so could we run tho- that report or look at some of that data and see? Maybe this, this hasn't been inspected in five years, ten years, fifteen years, but it's a known rental property.
Well, that, that's a good question. I would say the records that we keep. Are not that high tech. We would have to manually go back and sort inspection reports to provide the kind of data that you're looking for. The rental inspections have not yet migrated into. Um, intergov, which is the system that we use to issue, um, building permits and track the inspections required. Um, for construction. Um, so today, um, I would, we would have to go through files and, um. Do a good amount of, you know, manual sorting to put together that kind of report.
If I could just follow up real quick, um, just, you know, uh, Councilmember Smith said, uh, first of all, we'll look into the auto reversion the City of Liberty does, but. Councilmember Smith indicated that, I mean, and I honestly don't know that maybe we don't even have that many. That are switching over from one tenant to a successor tenant, so it may well be that we are, in fact, uh. Getting that report that's been switched into a landlord's name and by having that information provided to community development for follow-up, we may be able to. To get those folks, but we will look at the auto reversion, uh, idea that, uh, City of Liberty does, uh. Not sure about trying to monitor social media, uh, in all honesty, to try to. Try to get that information, we can take a look at that.
Well, and I don't mean social media in general, but specific to rentals, rental sites.
So sites that are for rent, in other words.
Yeah, that target that market, yeah.
I see. I think I saw Councilmember Stewart wanting to be recognized.
Yeah, I just want to say on the, uh, you know, when you're concerned about a, 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 a house or apartment. That hasn't changed it over in years, and you, we had a firefighter rent the same house for thirty years. And you get a lot of people like that, they don't want their privacy, I mean. He would have fixed something if something was wrong, or he would have complained to his landlord. But just to say we're going to inspect a house just because it hadn't been inspected in six, seven years. Doesn't mean anything's wrong with it. And, uh, these long-term tenants. Uh, usually the, the landlords take care of them people. You know, they're paying money to them and they appreciate a long term. And that's just something to think about.
Councilmember DeLong?
I don't think I already asked this, sorry if I did, how many re-inspections do we do a year? Do you have those numbers?
Um, no, I don't, the numbers that we presented in the memo were really the, the number of units that had been inspected. That wouldn't include any re-inspections.
Okay.
I, I don't have that data at hand.
Alright, thank you.
Councilmember Pierce?
Um, okay, some of the questions have already been answered. Um, in regard to the water bills, again, like I said before. If, if you're going to be one of these people who are renting to individuals who can't afford to live anywhere else, you're going to pay the water bill. Water bills are fairly cheap here, um, I think, I do like, uh, Councilmember Smith's idea that. If we know, it should go revert back to the landlord and then we would have a better idea on it. Um. It's always a civil action, if you're, if you actually are leasing and your landlord's not doing a good job, it's not the city's job. To come in and enforce that, it's not even, they can't even do it legally, so if you live in a property. Um, that's not being taken care of, you have to take civil action on that. Can I, I have a couple of questions, can a potential resident ask? If there's been an inspection in regard to the home they're moving into? It's, that's, let me just ask that first and then Sarah or Eric?
I, yes.
Okay, well, that's good, and can, and, can any, any resident contact you in regard to, um? When they see a, a resident, uh, an apartment or a home being vacated that. It's being vacated and it needs to be inspected, because you're right, nobody puts for rent signs up. The only place you see them in the duplexes and occasionally in a private home, so. But neighbors know when people are moving out and when they're not, so is it possible for anyone to contact the city? And kind of give them a heads up to say, hey, you know, people are moving out of this multi-unit dwelling or a, a single family home? And then you would go and check on that?
Well, y- yes, um. People could certainly call us and let us know that. I will say that we. We don't have a good mechanism for being able to distinguish between, you know. A house has sold and there's a new, um, a new owner moving in. Um, versus renters, although I believe you're probably right that neighbors might. Have a better handle on, on that than, than we would, but yes, it would be. We would really consider that to be similar to a code enforcement complaint and that we would take that information and look into it to see if there was something we needed to do.
Uh, thank you, and to, to, to talk about even going in every two or three years, again, I'm always, um. I managed property for years, so I never had to pay rent, and so I've never wanted to own a home. Because I like somebody else to come and fix things for me, so I'm a long-term renter, um, and a good renter. And rent from good people as a general rule, and I, I don't want somebody to come into my home that I'm sitting in right now. In three or four years, if I'm still living here, when there's no reason for him to come in. Um, it's my job as someone who's renting. If my landlords are not doing their job, to contact them. And if that doesn't work, go through the civil actions and things you need to do, I, I don't feel like it's the city's job. To sort of do what civil actions are already in place for. Um, and finally, I do want to say. I, I think code enforcement does a really good job, um, I have contacted as, as Eric and then. As he passes down, a number of times on silly things like grass or big things like trash or whatever, and. I've seen a pretty immediate response from whoever it is they contact, I, I don't know that any complaint that I've ever made. Has had to go through court, I'm, I'm, feel pretty confident saying it hasn't. Because if they've hassled them, if they've told them one time, and they told them the second time, by the third time, and I'm walking my dog, it's done. And sometimes it's even done better than what I thought it would be, as in the result of the Alpha Apartments. Where they literally cleaned up the trash and put down a concrete thing, and I walk by there every day and there's no trash there ever. It took about six months, but it was done, so I do want to compliment, uh, code enforcement because I know they don't. The people don't have to respond, but they tend to, so whatever it is you do with that, I, I think it's a good idea, but and just. To, to finish it up, I, I like the way that it is right now, I think that the only change, any changes would only penalize really good landlords. And, um, and still not catch, you know, the outliers who are renting rooms and not telling anybody, because that's going to always happen, always happen, thank you.
Councilmember DeLong?
Compliment.
Oh, no, I think, oh, I, I was just going to harass Rita, I think that was her that probably reported me four years ago for violating bulk trash up, trash pickup, so. Uh, I got a letter from Eric, so it does work.
Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Clevenger?
Just, yeah, I'm not really a cop, uh, are you looking, just kind of what you're looking for, you're looking direct for direction from us on where we want to go? It sounds like, it sounds like, to me, most of us are at least looking into the water bill and having that as a. As a, what would we call it, uh, an indicator of possible, someone you, uh, changing tenants that we don't have now. Um, you know, it sounds like we're split on the rental, um, you know, check inspection two or every two or three years, so. I don't know, you know, we could always revisit that later, but I think there are a few things that were. Um, I would like, you know, if somebody calls in, granted, some residents, they may or may not know what's going on if the house is sold or rented. But if they do call in, they say someone's renting the house and they. And codes fire, or community development finds out that they haven't had an inspection. Then we should contact that landlord to let them know, but. Um, I think, you know, the water bill thing, maybe looking at some of the rental sites is a, another way to, to beef it up a little bit at this time, so.
Alright, so, yeah, we definitely plan on having, uh, water utility, uh, contact community development going forward whenever a, a. We have a change in name and then, uh, community development, if they know it to be a landlord, can, can follow up there, we'll, we'll take a look at the, the other methods of trying to, uh. Get, uh, information on, on units that might turn over, we will, we'll look into the auto reversion, uh, in Liberty, so we're. We will follow up on those, uh, on those things. Uh, Councilmember Smith?
To be fair, I might, I'm not a hundred percent that Liberty does it, uh, that is an example that may work, so. Don't get mad at me if they don't, but I'm. I know it's available in some places where they will auto revert your water.
Will, uh, will, will ask them and see what they tell us. Uh, Councilmember Stefan?
I just wanted to, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, sir.
I just wanted to a- ask, I was reading this. Uh, and, eh, there was, there was a mention of license fee. And out of curiosity. Uh, what do, what are we talking about on license fee, I mean, how much money, I mean. Like thirty-five dollars a year or more than that?
We, we don't charge a license fee.
Yes, I know, but if rental inspections were to. Occur, it was mentioned in the memo that. That we would possibly have license fees, and that caught my eye. I mean. All right, we're talking like thirty-five dollars a year. And another thing, uh, well. Like to hear that, but I do have a couple of other things to say. I mean, estimate, just an estimate.
The amount of the fee would have to be set by the city council.
Well. I would say that it's probably only about thirty-five dollar, dollars a year would be my. Guessment on that. The, the fact on the rental inspections is. It would, um. It would, if it was done annually or on a more frequent basis. You're going to have to have more staff and. It, it would be nice to add more staff, but this is. This is not the time to be adding more people on the payroll. And so, uh, I wouldn't want to move forward on that, it wouldn't be fair to. To the people. And they, it wouldn't be fair to the employees that would be hired. Considering. You know, that. Income's just not coming in. Like it used to, and that's probably something that's going to have to be faced in the near future.
Councilmember?
Talking about like on changing, uh, names on water bills. Well, the, the inspection is only for rental property, it not, wouldn't be like if a house is sold from owner to owner. That's a question. That's all I had.
You're correct about, it wouldn't change from owner to owner, it would just be a matter of if we got the word, then we could let community develop. You're correct about, it wouldn't change from owner to owner. It would just be a matter of if we got the word, then we could let community development know. And if they had it on their uh, registration, they they might be able to check into it. Uh, Councilmember Pierce?
Again, and I'll say it just one last time, even with licensing, it's only going to be the landlords who are already doing the proper thing. Who are ready, you know, doing their inspections when they're supposed to, who are actually, you're going to know about. Who are going to license themselves. So it's going to continue to penalize, even if it's only thirty-five dollars, people who are doing the right thing. This is the kind of thing that there's always going to be things falling through the cracks. It's going to take the vigilance of us who live in the community. To let others, our residents, know who live in our communities, that they too have a voice if they have a concern. About a property being vacated that needs to be inspected, and the city already said that they can bring it to their attention. If that happens and we have a whole bunch of those, then we can talk about perhaps having more staff. But right now, number one, I don't think that there was really any kind of agreement in regard to inspection at all. Um, on any particular terms, and I really don't think anybody agreed on the licensing fee. Where the two things that, which Sarah brought to our attention as possible um, opportunities. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Stefan?
Yes, I was just referring to what was in the memo on that sort of thing. And uh. As far as licensing fees goes, and you know, a a small amount wouldn't be a big deal, but. I want to be perfectly clear. Uh, I wouldn't want to move forward on this. Uh, issue of rental inspections on a periodic basis. And primarily because of the uh, uh, issue of more staff having to be done. So I think, uh, my colleague, uh, Councilmember Pierce and I are in agreement. And I wouldn't want my reasoning to be distorted. I want it to be clear. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Move to adjourn.
Uh, Councilmember Pierce, will you verbalize?
Second. I moved to adjourn, sorry.
And Councilmember Clevenger, will you second?
I'll second the motion, yes.
Uh, we can go ahead and call the roll. Um, usually, I don't know that you have to do it for work sessions, but uh. May I just ask, uh, so we'll, we'll declare the meeting adjourned, uh, the work session adjourned, and we'll see you shortly for the regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.